I now call the Order of Business April 14, 2015. Mr. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Nettie Pigian, absent. Kenneth Barron.
Here.
Thomas Berry, absent. Robert Constant.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Joseph Kaczynski.
Here.
Marge, Margaret Horvath.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to ask our emergency manager, Bob Ankrup, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bob. Next order of business is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I move to approve the Order of Business for April 14, 2015, of the regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council as presented.
Support.
Seconded by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number four, approval of the minutes, 4A, the minutes of regular meeting of March 24, 2015.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
I move that the council approve the minutes of March 24, 2015, as submitted.
Support.
Seconded by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number six, fund transfers and current claims, and we did receive the additional backup for 617 today as an email.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
Move that current claims 61 through 630 be approved as submitted with the additional information for item 617.
Seconded by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you. Item 61, and this is Allied Incorporated from the water budget, just when we look at the invoice, if you could clarify the use of these items as for equipment, for, just to clarify, Director Zimmer?
I'll let the chairman go.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else?
I didn't hear the question, Mr. Chairman. What, what was the inquiry?
She asked if we knew why we needed the equipment that's listed on the invoice, and Bill's going to find out the specifics and report back to all of you.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Item 63, again, from water fund, vehicle tire, and installation, this is for you, Director Zimmer, when looking at the invoices, there's no specification or identification of what the vehicles were, unless I'm misreading, but I don't see plate, VIN, or any of the information. Can you, are you able to specify these purchases? Share with us.
I would imagine that's repair of the tires at our facility down here for just generic, so they go on whatever truck.
We do that with a lot of vehicles. We have spare rims and tires, so that if the bell tire or discount, whoever we use, is down that week, our mechanics or our men and women can make that, just put the tire right on, so we don't have a problem in times of late at night or emergencies.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I think that's it.
That's it? Anyone else have anything? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number eight, reports from the mayor, 8A, from Mayor Pleco, letter of intent with Crown Castle regarding cell towers at the Cantor Lakes Arena and the Department of Public Works.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
All right, I move to approve the two letters of intent between Crown Castle and the city of Dearborn Heights, and authorize the mayor to sign these items as outlined in 8A.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Kaczynski. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, not much on the item that is before us, but I had on the email an offer to purchase cell towers from our community. Is there anything of that nature in your hands, Mr. Mayor? What?
Well, I think, I'll let her speak, but my understanding is cell towers is going to be a dead technology in the not-too-distant future, but Chrissy's kind of our in-house expert on it.
Yeah, they, unfortunately, by default, on the issue with purchasing the cell towers, we get contacted probably twice a week with somebody, no offense to the profession, but a used car salesman will give you $250,000 for your cell tower lease, and a lot of these leases, former administrative assistant Kurt Heise negotiated when everybody was afraid of the towers, afraid of the technology and the rays, and we really are one of the very few, if not the only, community around here that is landlocked, so there are very minimal places they can move their towers, and we had such high leases because they needed to get those towers in in the '90s. Most communities have cell tower leases of anywhere from $8,000 to $12,000 a year with no co-location fees. We're in $20,000 a year range, plus the co-locators. So when companies call to purchase, if, I mean, you look at your line item in your budget, and it's a half a million dollars a year that we bring in. If, if we were, and constantly companies call to renegotiate the rates. These two are one of the oldest two towers that we have. They will be up in 2017. Right now, I don't know if you're familiar, but there's these small little boxes called micro towers that they put on gross seal in other remote locations, that they are moving towards that technology, but that's about 10 to 15 years away. They still need the big towers. We still have a negotiating tool. We need to lock them in, though, so this gets us well into 2030. At the same time, they need a reason to lock in that long. They would just do five-year extensions. So a back-and-forth negotiation created a total with both towers of a $250,000 lump sum. The rate will go back up to what they're paying now in 10 years. The difference, it's $12,000 a year less that we're getting totals, so we're still up money even without the calculations of time and value money. And we have a rate, we have them locked in through 2030. Does that kind of explain the background?
Yeah, that's satisfactory. I got the impression that what the mayor had said, that the potential for any great benefit over the near term is not there, because the technology is moving forward, and there won't be a need for these towers as they exist now. But somebody must know something that we are probably not privileged to, where those cell towers might come into some benefit in another medium.
No, no. Those people that are trying to buy out, buy them out at a two-to-three-year, they know they're going to be around for the next 10 to 15 years, so they will give you, we'll buy them for 20 years, and we'll give you $700,000, because they've been doing it since the market crash. They've been going to municipalities and school districts saying, this is a quick way to make money and balance your funds, but it's not, because then that revenue goes away.
Councilor Gary, you have a?
Yeah, and if I may, Councilman, the other thing is, is that there seems to be a lot of speculation. I guess Chrissy would, I'm sure you'd probably agree with respect to these towers. That's why you always get all these people calling and trying to do something, to purchase and renegotiate, and everything else with respect to these towers. So you can't just take a look at these things on their face and assume that they know something. Sometimes they just want to invest in something and think that if it goes bad, well, whatever, and if it goes well, then we'll make a bunch of money.
That's their return on investment. And also, just, I have been following this, I'm not an expert, but I use Neil Lado, and Neil's our cable attorney, but he's very up in the times with cell towers and their issues, because it is rather confusing. But Neil Lado and I are in contact almost once a week over what's going on, and he's let me, he's let me in on his email stream from the other attorneys throughout America that deal solely with cell towers. So we're a pretty good bargaining chip, and it's a pretty good deal.
Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number B, from Mayor Pleco, River Oaks Elementary School Annual Cleanup Parade.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move we concur with Mayor Pleco, and author approve the parade for the River Oaks Elementary School on May 21 at 2:00 PM, as outlined in 8B. Second.
Seconded by Councilman Kaczynski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number nine, report from city official, 9A, from city clerk Wachowicz, notice of public hearing for proposed 2015-16 corporate fund balance.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
Move council concur the request of city clerk Wachowicz, the request that a public hearing be scheduled for Tuesday, May 12, 2015, and that the adoption of the budget be scheduled at the regular meeting on May 26, 2015. All for the item of 9A.
Seconded by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 9B, from Controller McCary, budget amendment.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I move to approve the budget amendment submitted by Controller Vince McCary as outlined in 9B.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Kaczynski. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 9C, from Organist Director McIntry, Budget Amendment Animal Processing, 2014-15.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
Move council concur with the request to amend the animal processing budget for the fiscal year 2014-2015, per the agenda item 7A, dated 27/14.
Seconded by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 9D, from Community and Economic Development Director Ayman, Berwin Center ADA Restroom Improvement Project.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I move to approve and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign the revised contract for the CDBG-FY 2014 Berwin Senior Center ADA Restroom Improvement Project as outlined in 9D.
Seconded by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 9E, from Treasurer Riley, computer purchase v. American Express Corporate Membership Reward Points. Is that why you're here, Doug?
Yes.
Okay. So Doug's here if there's any questions. Your motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
Move council concur with Treasurer Riley authorizing Dearborn ITT to utilize American Express Corporate Membership Award, Reward Funds to purchase computer and computer peripherals, hardware, and software for approximately 43 computers to be used by the city of Dearborn Heights office staff, including the proposal amendments that are found in this document, all per item 9E.
Seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion?
If I might, I want to thank, it was Commissioner Webb that brought this program to us, that we can make part of our purchases that we normally do with an American Express card, that got us $10,200,000 points, which is leading to the savings. So the program continues to be a very good program for us.
Big savings. Yep. Good. And thanks to Doug for working on this and seeing what we can get.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 9F, from Treasurer Riley, interfund loan and loan agreement promissory note with the tax increment finance authority. This was discussed at our session beforehand. Councilman Kaczynski.
Move council concur the request of the indicated in Treasurer Riley's communication dated April 7, 2015, to continue to authorize the treasurer to enact interfund loans as needed at an interest rate of quarter percent per annum between the funds listed below and the general fund at the maximum loan amounts listed, the funding as described in 9F.
Support.
Seconded by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
As you had indicated, this was discussed at study session, but for the public's interest, and Treasurer Riley, would you mind, do you mind sharing the, I think there's some improvements here that need to be shared with the public, and also to know that this is permissible under Michigan Constitution, and is paid back with a percent of, you know, interest and repayable by September 9, 2015. But I think the fact that there's improvement from 2012, and significant improvement, I think that would be nice to share with the general public if they weren't here for public's, the study session, and because it's being televised, I'd like the public to hear the improvements. Thank you.
Hello. With the financial downfall, the city ran into some hard times, which required us to borrow funding towards our year-end. Back in the year of 2012, the amount was $9,400,000. The proposal that's projected this particular year ending June 30, 2015, is $2,400,000. And that's because some of the revenue sources for the current fiscal year is actually received after year-end, which requires us to get a, require a small, this loan, to get us through that shortage of cash flow. And so the projection is $2,400,000. The request is a little bit more than that, just in case something that is unforeseen comes up, that we have the ability to make all of our payments timely, which we have been doing throughout the whole period. And then, as stated, we do pay interest to the funds of which we borrow.
Thank you. And if I may, for follow-up real quick, just wanted to add again, for public information, you're anticipating we're waiting for two shared revenue payments of $900,000, as well as you had mentioned, the Wayne County, the past due taxes.
Revolving tax fund.
Yeah. Revolving. So that is kind of, you don't know when it's going to come in, so that is why we do this, and it is paid back with interest by September. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 9G, from Public Service Administrator Zimmer, ENN Cement Company Contract Extension.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
I move that the council approve the proposal from ENN Cement for a three-year extension period with a 2% increase per year for materials and labors, as outlined in 9G.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Kaczynski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 9H, from Public Service Administrator Zimmer, printer purchase for the water department.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move that we concur with our public director, Public Services Director William Zimmer, and approve the purchase of six printers, as per the quote attached, as outlined in 9H.
Support. Seconded by Councilman Kaczynski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 9I, from Recreation Director Gribble, liquor license application for the Spirit 2015 Festival. And there was a specific?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
Move the attached resolution indicated in 9J with regard to liquor licensing and insurance for the Spirit Festival.
Do you want us to read the resolved?
9I.
9I?
Support. Seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 9J, from Recreation Director Gribble, adult beverage supplier recommendation for the Spirit 2015 Festival.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I move to approve and award the adult beverage supplier for the Spirit 2015 Festival to O&amp;W Incorporated. Their address is 3003 William Avenue, Ypsilanti, and as outlined in 9J.
Support. Seconded by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 9K, from Councilman Kaczynski, request for information for Community and Economic Development Director Ayman.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
I move that item 9K be referred to the administration with a specific destination to Mr. Ronald Ayman, to address the questions at issue, and that the information should be formatted in a, in a form that would appear on the next agenda.
Support.
Seconded by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Kaczynski.
This motion is being proposed to garner certain information on the contracts that council approved under motion 14404 on December 9. At that time, the council did not receive copies of the contracts, and I might explain that at the end of each year, I go through my agenda for the previous calendar year to determine if there are any open items, and I determined that this was an open item in view that the contracts were still pending. The information that will come back from Mr. Ayman will be an opportunity for comparing the information that I have garnered through my own research with the contractors, either by mail or by telephone. And I think it's important to say that the information that I had accumulated in contacting the contractors is highly suggestive that there may not have been an appropriate contract in place for the council to vote on December 9. If the contracts were voted, and the contracts were in hand for council review, there might have been an opportunity to approve them with more enthusiasm than I find necessary at this point. So when the, when the information comes back from Mr. Ayman, I will compare that information to my findings with regard to my research independently of the contractors directly. For example, of the four contractors that are listed in 14404, one of the contractors did not respond at all for me to ask questions or to inquire what their position was on the contract. A second contractor indicated to me verbally, and subsequently by email, that they have not received a contract, and that they would consult with Mr. Ayman to get a copy of the contract to answer the questions that I posed. A third contractor got materials to fill out on March 3. Must remind you that we approve the contracts in a motion 14404 on December 9. This person told me that they received materials on March 3 and sent them back to the destination indicated, to the Community and Economic Development on March 23, a far shot from the time that we approved these contracts. And the fourth contractor indicated that they were working under a contract that was established on March 10, 2010, and that the current contract was still being worked on with regard to changes in the language of the contract. So that kind of information correlated, in my mind, suggested very strongly that the potential for a contract to be in place appropriately on December 9, under motion 14404, is in high question. And once again, at risk of repetition, I'm highly interested in finding what the answers to the questions will be, as well as comparing them to what my findings are from the individual contractor. Yesterday, council chairman presented to me with about 750 pages of material for me to read overnight. That's a high compliment to me. I cannot, under any circumstance, read 750 pages that were furnished to me from the Community and Economic Development Department. But I did read one, and the one that I read is the one labeled K, having to do with the official date of signature by the city clerk and the mayor, affixed to the contractual agreements with the providers of services to the CEDD. The paper that was given to me, which is a separation sheet, reads this way. As of April 13, 2015, new contracts have not been signed by the city clerk or the vendors. That's highly suggested to me that the contract that was put before us for unanimous approval is highly in question. But once again, I am willing to look at all of the details that come to my desk, if and when the information comes forward. In addition to that, I'm aware of some contracts showing up in the clerk's office on April The approval of the contracts on December 9 numbered four contractors. The documents that were furnished to the city clerk, whom I asked to keep me apprised of any kind of activity with regard to these contracts, resulted in an opportunity for me to review these contracts. Interesting enough, there are only three of the four contracts given to the clerk. One of those contracts had no information furnished by the contractor. There were signatures on three of the contracts, which included the one that didn't have any information on, they were signed by the administration, absent of a date of signature, and absent of a witness to sign those contracts. So I'm trying to correlate all of this information into a single bundle, so that I understand totally and completely what has gone down on motion 14404. My immediate thought at this point is to rescind motion 14404, and get the Community and Economic Development to resubmit a resolution with all the contracts in place according to the requirements that HUD has announced. And why am I interested in this? Because I'm not sure that we can allow the conduct of business by these contractors without a valid, a valid signed contract on both sides, the contractor and the administration. the administration. Why is that important? Because if we are not conforming or complying to the regs defined by HUD with regard to offering opportunities for somebody to do business as needed in the Community and Economic Development Department, we may stand the potential of being scrutinized and looked at very seriously as to why we permitted that. So that, that's the reason why I'm, I'm insistent on seeing the details of these contracts.
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
If I might, we didn't have the courtesy of seeing this till I got my agenda on Thursday afternoon and we tried to share all the documentation with all of you. I'm not here to hide anything. So I did not know the voluminous nature of your requests, but I put an order in that that be provided to you and, and we contacted the council chairman when I saw the agenda on Thursday.
Correct.
So if we had been aware of this earlier, we would have got the information earlier. Now, it may just, it, I, I don't know enough to be able to respond positively or negatively to the requests. We're here all to do the right thing. It might make sense, I mean, do all of you want packets of seven hundred and fifty pages of documents? It just might make sense to have the director, the council, the mayor, if need be, the attorney and how, where we are and where do we get to where everybody is satisfied with the amount and, and the actions taken. So I would recommend, I think the motion to refer it to the administration, we certainly can be, but I would suggest that we hold a study session on this and determine what needs to be done, what Councilman Kozinski's concerns are and go from there.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm appreciative of that comment and I would agree to those kinds of arrangements. But the, the pile of paper that I have received today, I, I have a suspicion that they were the same kind of collection of information that was put before me right here on March the tenth. When I wanted to take those documents home to read them in my, in the privacy of my own home so that I could get through them much more quickly, I was told that those were the only documents available and that they were not available to me. As a public official, public records were not available to me. That, that was a little disturbing to me, but I'm willing to do what is necessary to cooperate to get to the bottom of this.
Sure.
And one of the, one of the great difficulties is that when the issue came on the agenda in December ninth, customarily, the council gets a listing of all of the contractors that have participated to submit details of what they had to offer. That did not happen in this case. All we got was a statement that the contractors were processed through a certain system and that they passed all the scrutiny and that they came from the, from the office of the controller and Mr. Ayman then made a recommendation that we accept them, all fine and good. There has to be a certain degree of trust between the responsibilities that council has and the administrative staff. Without that, we would be here for hours trying to sort out these things. But once again, I'm willing to go the extra route to determine what is really, what was really in place on December ninth and did we as a council miss something by virtue of not having that sufficient backup so that we could really make a decision appropriately as in other competitive bidding situations? And finally, I, I, I'm highly interested to know whether Councilor Miyake had gone over these contracts to, to determine if there's been.
I don't believe so.
They go, they go through, I think, isn't the other attorney?
Ellen Brothers normally.
Ellen Brothers.
Okay.
Well, we, what I would suggest, we'll have Mr. Miyake here and we'll have Ellen Brothers.
What I would like to suggest is that Mr. Ayman write a letter to the council with regard to the questionnaire that has been presented to him, indicate in that letter that the documents have already been submitted based on the questionnaire on April thirteenth and that he is just concurring with the request and sign it and send it to the chairman and we'll look at it that, from that point on. You don't have to reproduce seven hundred and fifty pages for each individual member here.
Counsel, Councilman, I gave you exactly what you asked for. And by the way, it's probably closer to a thousand pages. It took my staff the entire day yesterday to put together the documents that you requested in your two-page letter. Your list was two pages long. I gave you every document that you requested and I realize it's a lot of documents to go through, no question about it.
The, Mr. Chairman, there's, there's one other issue that's, that's troubling me and that is the fact that when the documents, the, the contracts came to existence in the clerk's office, he had them in his possession probably from April sixth to maybe April Because of the election occurring and because of some personal issues in his lifetime, in his life at that time, he could not sign those documents or even read the contracts to justify his signature. In a short time later, I understand that you had sent a representative to pick those documents up, to retrieve them. What was the purpose of furnishing him the documents and in a short time later asking that they be retrieved?
You're absolutely right, Councilman, and as a matter of fact, I had them picked up yesterday, not on the eighth of April. I sent the documents over to the mayor's office. It took a couple of days. There were, let's see, twelve different signature pages that had to be signed. I needed four originals of the three contracts. Then they went over to the clerk's office and I waited and I waited and I waited several days. Finally, I called Walter. I said, Walter, you didn't sign the contracts. He says, I'm up to here with the election. I had completely forgotten about the election and I know at election time, Walter is buried and stuff. I sent my guy over, pick him up, when the election's over, I'll send him back, Walter can sign him and we'll be done with the matter.
All right, all said and done. I appreciate your comments. There has to be a cooperative spirit when we get together to discuss this issue. I don't think you need to republish seven hundred and fifty pages as I have been delivered yesterday. It's grossly impossible for me to do that, to read all that, but I will, I will continue as time permits and in the meantime, send back a note of acknowledgement that you have to us, that we have received documents on April thirteenth and we'll go from there.
Wow, I'll do that, Councilman, but shouldn't you be sending me a receipt saying you received the documents you asked for?
Let's, why don't we, why don't we?
I'll, I'll write you a letter, but it's just my word. I would assume that, you know, it would be your word that you got what you were asking for, but I'll do that.
Well, the fact that Chairman Barron was kind enough to bring his truck and deliver that document is evidence that I did get the document.
Well.
I have read.
Chairman volunteered. I offered to have him deliver it to you, but Chairman said he'd do it. I said, okay, fine.
Mr. Chairman, the, the evidence to the fact that the documents are in my hand, I read the K indicated as to what was said as of April thirteenth, twenty-fifteen, new contracts have not been signed by the city clerk or vendors.
That's correct.
So there, there's evidence that I do have the documents.
I'm sorry? There's evidence what?
There is evidence that I did receive the documents.
Oh.
Now, if you want some kind of acknowledgement that I did.
No, I, I, I don't. I, I trust your word, Councilman, but if you want me to write a letter to the council saying I gave you the documents, I'd be more than glad to.
Yeah.
That's not a problem.
I think it's you more than us. It will, it will demonstrate that you have delivered the documents, not on April twenty-eighth, but on April thirteenth.
Be glad to do it, Councilman.
Unnecessary, it's unnecessary.
Okay, so I can assume that you'll, Mr. Chairman, you'll give us a date and time and we'll have a study session.
Yeah, when.
Study session.
When Councilman Kozinski is ready, maybe. I mean, I know we got a lot of budget stuff and.
That's.
And the election.
We're, we're in the midst of a very busy, busy time, so. The great, the great concern, I'll repeat again, is that if, if we're not complying to having services performed as needed by the Community and Economic Development Department, which could very well be defined by HUD as non-compliance because there are no contracts in place, we're in trouble. So if you, if I, if I can be convinced otherwise, I will relax, but I'm not, I'm not at this point convinced that there was an appropriate contract in place on December ninth.
If I may be permitted to respond?
I'm sorry?
Hmm? The previous contracts have an expiration date. The expiration date means that any time either party can pull out of the contract, until one party pulls out, we can carry it on and that's what we've done. And that is past practices, Councilman. It's happened quite often.
I think all of those details have to be hashed out.
Well, then we'll get together then. When, when you're ready, let me know and then we'll get together and.
Okay.
I just want to assure you that I am complying with HUD and those contracts that were signed previously are still valid. They are still, the vendors are still complying with the same rates they gave us three years ago and they'll carry on until such time as they feel they no longer want to and then it'll be their prerogative to pull out of the contract.
Okay.
So the motion on the floor, that's been seconded. All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
What was the motion? I'm confused.
Refer to administration.
The motion that was referred to the administration.
With an ultimate destination to Mr. Ayman's attention.
Mr. Chairman, do we, do we need a second motion to move it to study session?
No.
No.
We're good, okay. Thank you.
Okay. And the thirteen new business, thirteen A, business license renewal for Cordyce Collision, two seven one zero zero Van Born, Uncle Ray's Place, two four five oh two Warren, Leo's Coney Island, two six five four zero Ford Road, Ford Lanes, two three one zero zero Van Born and Ford Lane, Ford Lanes Arcade, two three one zero zero Van Born.
All right, Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I move to approve the renewal of the business licenses that you've just read and outlined in thirteen A.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. This concludes our regular portion of our meeting and before I ask the council if they have any discussion, I have a statement to read that we, the council and administrative have concluded about the August eleventh, two thousand and fourteen floods. The city of Dearborn Heights and its neighboring communities all experienced a record-breaking rainfall on August eleventh, two thousand and fourteen. After that event, a review of the sewer system was conducted. There were no obstructions, blockages, maintenance issues or other problems with the city of Dearborn Heights sewer systems. On that day, that caused basement backup, surface flooding or street flooding. To the extent of the flooding is attributed to a cause, it is an act of nature. This conclusion is supported by the declaration of a disaster and distribution of emergency grants through FEMA. Messages concerning claims and transmitted, can be transmitted to Gregory A. Roberts at G Roberts Flood at C as in Charles, M as in Mary, D as in Door, A as in Apple, dash Law, L A W dot com. And Mark will respond to the claims. Okay, so at this particular point, does anyone from the council have anything they would like to bring up?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you. I'll have announcement on behalf of Crestwood High School Drama Club. They will be presenting the hit musical Addams Family on April seventeenth, eighteenth, twenty-third, twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth at seven P M. Tickets are seven dollars in advance or ten dollars at the door, eight dollar for students and C H S staff, seven dollars for senior citizens with I D. And also, there will be a free senior citizen show on April sixteenth at eleven A M. The second announcement I'd like to share is that there will be a community conversation on Saturday, April twenty-fifth at the Carolyn Kennedy Library, which is located at two four five nine zero George Street from one to three P M. Community Conversation is a group out of Ann Arbor at five oh one C three that presents topics of interest to Michigan residents. Last year was transportation road funding and this year it's education affordability and getting Michigan back to work. It's a great opportunity for our community to come together and share your opinions, your thoughts, what's important to you. The information will be compiled to, in a report that is given, provided to all of our state representatives and senators and it does possibly have impact on legislation in the future. So that was that.
I think it's through the Center for Michigan though, right?
Yes, sir, it is, yep. Again, that is on Saturday, April twenty-fifth, one P M at Carolyn Kennedy Library. And the last thing I had, I had received a letter from a resident who had experienced the flooding from the August storms in twenty-fourteen and with the rainfall we had on Thursday, April ninth, you know, of course, their homes didn't flood, but they did have quite a bit of water. And of course, we know that the, the sewer lines, they drain slowly and there's a reason it's designed that way, otherwise it's, it's too much overwhelming and it ends up back in your basement or could possibly, I'm not an expert, but I guess it was up to past the sidewalk, which is quite a bit. And this person sent me a letter and I just wanted to, to bring it to the attention that there's still a lot of concern in that area when they do get rain like that, you know, and the question became, where are we in the process? I know, and I'm asking this for public information, how we're doing. I did talk to Chrissy and thank you about the FEMA mitigation and grant opportunities and I know she has one more day tomorrow and will report back to us, but the, the next question went back to the twenty-ten consent judgment. I don't know if we're able to share anything regarding that and follow up on that piece. I know we had talked about, we need to pursue this agreement, this judgment.
That's in the attorney's hands.
Yeah. There is a status conference that is scheduled for Wednesday, April the twenty-ninth with Judge Jewell, who has taken over the case from Judge Colombo and Mr. McCauley and I will be attending that status conference.
Okay.
And then the other thing, we're in the process, we filed a couple grant application. One was for home acquisition and also for, I'll say sump pumps, but something similar to that for residents. And Chrissy's been spending time at seminars that are being given by the state police that handle these emergencies and we're optimistic, more optimistic in, in one, the home acquisition seems to have been the right project at the right time, I guess is one way to put it. But we are in a lot of competition, so I'm, the, the sump pump one is one of many. I'm not as optimistic about that particular program, but we're pushing both of them as hard as we can and there are quite a few more documents and things. We, we may, what I would expect will happen in the near future, we'll be contacting individuals because we have to get pre-interest from residents before we can finalize the application. So we will be holding either a meeting or most likely sending these individuals a certified letter, some kind of letter, because we've got to get them to respond that they would in fact be interested in such a program or the state's not going to approve it. So there'll be more of affirmative action coming in the very near future. I don't know the details as it relates to when that, we don't have dates yet, but that's how that process is going.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
The, Councilor Miyake, are we moving forward on the changes, the potential changes in the charter with regard to advertising?
Yes, I'll be getting back to you with that.
That's not a concern until November, right?
Well, it will be to you much sooner than that. It's just.
I understand. I understand, but the, the action will take place in November.
The language approved by the Attorney General beforehand.
Right.
So, we're still, we're still on the green side to, to get that done.
Yes, we're, we're fine in terms of time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Share about the volunteer appreciation. Okay, hi, thank you.
Anything else from any council members? Councilman Conson?
The Dearborn Heights Watershed stewards commission is sponsoring the 22nd Annual Ekorse Creek Cleanup on Saturday, May 2, from 9 to 1 at Swapka Park, which is 5400 McKinley, right next to the Richard A. Young Center. And we welcome all volunteers. We'll have tools, T-shirts, and we always have food available at 1 o'clock. We're having sponsorships. You have your name on a T-shirt, so if you're a local business, or any of the council people or elected officials are interested, they can contact either myself or Watershed Stewart, Tom Wensel, who can be reached at 313-598-5182.
Okay. Anything else from the council? Mayor, did you have?
Real briefly, we had an event that we've been doing on an annual basis, and that is the City of Dearborn Heights Volunteer Lunch. And we invite individuals who give their time and their effort on behalf of the city. And so, it's a small way to thank them for all their efforts. But we had the volunteer lunch today. We had a few hundred people show up, and I just want to say once again publicly to all the volunteers that on behalf of us as elected officials and also the community, we thank you for all the hours and hours of free time that you volunteer to help make Dearborn Heights a better city, and thank you so much for giving your time and your efforts because you make the city a better place, and.
Yep, sure do.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Yeah, I just, I want, if I may add, I serve on the Commission on Aging, and one of the things we do is we pick a Senior of the Year, which is a volunteer position, of course, all the, recognized for the volunteer hours and what they do in our community. And truly, they're the back, any volunteer is a backbone of our community. And I wanted to share, if I may, the, the last three, the Margaret Whitehead, which is the Michigan state level for volunteer of the year, a senior citizen, we have had the last three recipients.
Have been from.
Have been from Dearborn Heights, including this year's Barth Bruchirelli, and Linda Mahaney was the one before that, and I don't recall the third person, so I apologize. But that is a real great testimony, and as we, somebody had mentioned a feather in the cap for those individuals, but also for our city to know, we have, you know, people that give so much of their time to their community. And that's, that's all ages, but thank you to all of our volunteers. It's a very nice event today.
Anything else on the table? Clerk Pachivitz?
As you probably all are aware, we have an election on May 5. Absentee ballots have gone out. If you have applied for an absentee ballot prior to this week and have not received it yet, please call our office, 313-791-3432. We have gotten very few complaints, and we're glad of that, of people not getting their ballots. They do get lost in the mail and so forth and so on. Please remember when you send them to sign the envelope. We need that envelope signed to make it a, a valid vote, or else we have to send it back to you. Everybody's been doing great. I don't think we've sent more than a dozen back. We've received over 1,200 ballots already. Also, we will be open on May the 2nd, I believe, the Saturday before the election, from 9 to 2 for absentee voting that day to get absentee ballots or anything election-related that day. So, I'll remind you at the next council meeting once again, but we will be open the Saturday previous to the election from 9 to 2. Once again, if you have any questions concerning anything regarding the election, please call us at 791-3432, and thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then at this particular time, before we ask for any announcements, we have here Doug Simpson from the Senior Alliance, and he wanted to give us a presentation. He passed out a booklet to all of us. Bob Brown is Executive Director, and I'm sure you're all familiar with Bob, a past council and House member and so forth, so.
Thank you, Mr. President, City Council, Mr. Mayor, and fellow residents of Dearborn Heights, because I happen to be a resident of Dearborn Heights, live on Colgate on the South End. So, my name is Doug Simpson. I am the Director of Program Operations at the Senior Alliance, and once a year, we come out to each of the city councils in the 34 communities that we represent to try to let you know what we do. So, I'm going to kind of try to make this reliezy. How many people know of the Senior Alliance here in the, in the group? Not too bad. However, I need to do a lot more work so you know what we are. How many people here either have parents or grandparents? Okay. What would you do if one of them got sick or got put in the hospital and were coming out of the hospital? Do you know what you would do? That's where the Senior Alliance comes into play. We are here to assist the citizens of the 34 communities, make sure that our elderly and those with disabilities are able to stay in the, the homes that they want to stay in. We do a lot of different, we have a lot of different programs, and you guys have those in your books, and I will be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have now or later on. But the Senior Alliance is made up of what we call Area Agency on Aging. There are 16 of us in the state of Michigan, and it was created by the Older Americans Act. Most of you guys probably know the Senior Alliance by Meals on Wheels, because this is one of the things that we definitely put funds into and, and do make sure that with the assistance of Wayne County that people do get their, get their meals on wheels. One of the things that you might not be aware of, that we also serve holiday meals. We do this four times a year. We do it at Thanksgiving, Christmas, Easter, and Labor Day. Last Labor Day, I am proud to say that I delivered 38 in the, in the city of Dearborn Heights. But my wife and my son, every holiday except for Thanksgiving, go out to the different communities and help deliver volunteer meals. And what, it, it's not just giving somebody a hot meal on a holiday that, that is important, but what it does, it does a, a check, a safety check, to make sure that these people are doing okay on the holiday, because there's definitely a high rate of suicide during the holidays for people that are living by themselves. So, we tend to do a safety check to make sure that everybody is happy. And just to kind of give you a quick story, I had a lady in Dearborn Heights one, one year, we were, we were doing a meal, and I gave her a meal, and she says, Sonny, you gotta wait. You gotta hold on right here for a second. I said, Okay. And she comes back, and she gives me these three calendars. She says, Thank you very much for giving the meals. We get the calendars out to my car, and the calendars were like three years old, but you know, it was a thought of things. I still have those calendars sitting on my wall in my office. It tells me that people care, that we are making a difference in the communities that we serve. Our mission is really simple. We empower people with needs to live with dignity in the community they choose by providing available services. We do our best to help anybody that needs assistance. And you don't necessarily have to be elderly. You don't necessarily have to be disabled to call our office. If you have a situation where you can't find services, give us a call. I can almost guarantee you, we are going to try to find the correct agency that you need to get the services that can help you out. Unfortunately, we're not always able to help everybody. I'm not going to say that we always, we're 100% at it, but we do try our best. I've been working with the agency for three years. I worked for the federal government as a contract before that, made twice as much money as I'm making now, but I can guarantee you something right now. This is the best job I have ever had in my life. I get to see a difference. I make a difference in people's lives. And I hope that those that have dealt with the Senior Alliance have noticed the difference before. And I can guarantee you something right now. If you haven't, see me. Call my number, ask for Doug Simpson. I am going to make it better for you. Sorry for the soapboxing, but I'm very passionate about, about what I do here. For every dollar that we receive from federal government or from the state, 95% of it goes back into services, so we only use 5% for administrative cost. On your sheets, you'll notice that roughly, we've, we've assisted 2,215 residents in the city of Dearborn Heights. During this last big snow, snowstorm that we had, I, I actually was, was the person that had to call off, tell my people not to come into work because the snow was so bad. 22 of my neighbors were very grateful that I did that because I was able to plow their sidewalks. So, what goes around, comes around. We've helped people, I, I have a few people, and I can't give their names, you know, because of, it just wouldn't be right, but some of the people in Dearborn Heights that we have helped, we've, we've done transportation for people, people that could not get, could not either use Smart, or could, Smart would not take them to where their destination is. We recently purchased a van about a year ago, and we, well, actually about a year and a half ago, and that was my first project, and we are now up to two vans where we assist people when they need transportation, can't find it anywhere else. We also helped a lady that was an amputee in the city who was unable to get downstairs to do her laundry anymore. We contracted the workout, and she now has her washer and dryer upstairs so that she can at least do her wa, her, her laundry, and she can stay in her house. These are some of the things that we can do. If anybody has any questions, hasn't, has a need, wants to know what we can and what we can't do, I'm going to stick around. Please come and see me. Thank you, City Council. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then at this time, if anyone has any announcements, things happening, going on in the city? Bill?
I just want to make the public aware, our Ann Arbor Trail construction project will be starting tomorrow. Inkster to Glengarry, the road will be closed eastbound. Westbound will remain open. The speed limit has also been reduced, so be cautious in that area. Also, the Warren Avenue project's getting ready to start, probably as early as this week. And that's going to be a bit of a hassle. There's a lot of work going on in that area, so just please slow down. Also, I noticed, you probably noticed our water main project on Telegraph, intermittent lane closures. We'll be going from Haas to Warren Avenue in this phase of the project, so be cautious there as well.
Okay, thanks. Mike?
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. Just wanted to mention a big upcoming library event this Saturday at Carolyn Candy Library. From 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, we will be having a library open house. Come on out to celebrate the 10th anniversary of the library's new building. We will be having a food truck rally, including Detroit Barbecue, Heroes or Villains, The Rolling Stoves, and Shimmy Shack. We will, we will also will be having cake and popcorn, an inflatable obstacle course, a bubble wand area, children's crafts, children's book giveaways, live music with the R.J. Spangler Trio, Dr. Zemo's amazing science and magic shows, database demonstrations, and library tours. But wait, there's more. We will also be having a participation raffle. Come on, come on out and get your library card, check out a book, or sign up for the e-newsletter and get a chance to win one of four gift bags, three with $50 gift cards, and one with a custom piece of art from the Glass Academy. You know, if you by some strange happenstance manage to miss the open house on the 18th, or just want more library because you cannot get enough, we will be having another open house from 1 to 4:00 PM at JFK on the 25th. We'll be having a number of events there as well, including a custom puppet workshop and clown, and clown shows in addition to many of the events we had the previous week. We will also be having Zemo work his wonderment at JFK, popcorn and cake, crafts, book giveaways, database demonstrations, tours, and of course, another chance at winning a custom piece of art from the Glass Academy via our participation raffle. Please see our website or call for more information. The puppets workshop space is limited, so call 313-791-60504 reservations. Thank you for your time and attention. That is all for now. Thanks for your time, and see you at the library open house.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Things happening in the city going on? Seeing none? Then at this point, if anyone has any questions or concerns, please direct them to me. You would like to talk to, if you'd like to talk to any of the council members, the mayor, department heads, et cetera, let me know, and I will ask them if they would like to respond. I will tonight, since Councilman Barry isn't here. We'll be keeping track of time. You have three minutes. I will hold up.
I can do it.
Oh, you can do it? Okay. Well, Councilman Conson will take over. Here we go. When you have 15 seconds left, he will hold up the 15-second sign, and when your three minutes are up, he will hold up the stop sign. So, then if you can give your name, the street you live on, and the city you live on, that's what we need. And then at that particular point, Councilman Conson will start the time.
Very good. All right. Troy Brown, Hanover Street, Dearborn Heights. My friend Ray there's handing out. As you know, Mr. Chairman, I proposed at the last public meeting a, a request for an injunction to stop all dumping, permit, non-permitted and unnatural flow dumping into the Ekorse Creek. I want to first start out by saying I have the facts to back up that the flows are coming from these sources, and to suggest that it was willy-nilly is really, is really not, not, not accurate. And I, and I seek to prove this. But I told you, Mr. Chairman, that I'd, I'd actually have some way to fund this, because we talk about waiting for state funding, waiting for federal funding. But, see, we don't need to wait for federal and state funding to at least help the residents out immediately. And so, I handed out to you the info taken from Sheet 5 of the water rates that you just approved in January, I believe it was. And in this, it talks about the cash that's available to the city. And it's, and it's pretty, and it's pretty, it's pretty good. Now, we can do all the numbers to those first two pages, and we can come up with, obviously, the city is in pretty good shape here. But there's a CSO revenue, actually a credit of $6,801,157. And as you can see, what I, what I propose there is to cross that out, take those monies, put $300, $3 million on flood risk mitigation plan for residents, sandbags, pumps, backflow preventers, and of course, our long overdue compensation for the 2014 flood. And then would be $3.8 million, $3.8, $3,801,157 for legal counsel and professional consultation to support preventing unnatural and unpermitted flow into the north branch of the Ekorse Creek, and the consent agreement enforcement as outlined in my request for the injunction letter, AKA the willy-nilly report per corporation counsel. So, I actually did what I said I was going to do. I was going to help you fund it. So, I don't know if you've tabled that or not as a council, but we need to approach the county and stop the, the unnatural and unpermitted flows into the north branch of the Ekorse Creek. Okay? And then that's coupled with the second part there, or the first part of flood mitigation. We don't need federal funds. We have money. We have money. We have at least $6,801 in a CSO fund that we're not using. So, just like your own home, if you have an emergency fund, you know, instead of putting it on a credit card, you go to your emergency fund, and you get the money because you have an immediate need. That's what I'm suggesting. So, is there something you can, something you guys could talk about? Did you talk about the, the, the first request?
This is coming from the, the water budget, correct? You said?
Yeah, this is the water budget, of course.
Okay. Well, of course, we won't be talking about the water budget. We have to.
No, this is in, this is in effect right now. See, that's the good thing. You won't even have to, you won't even, that's right. You won't even have to, you don't even have to go back and amend the budget, because this, this money is already there. Because if you look at the funds available at 63014, there was $4.34,302,140, and if you take that $6,801,157, you're going to come up with $11,103,267. We got plenty of money to take care of our issue, at least until the county can fix the problem. All right? We could take care of the immediate need, and we could take, take care of the legal need of going after the county. So, this is what we need.
I will.
Yeah.
You'll get with the mayor, and we'll see what, how this works out.
Yeah, you didn't do anything, you didn't do anything on my, on my initial proposal? My proposal for an injunction?
No.
No.
We don't do that.
No?
No.
Okay, so what about, so how, to my wife's question last week, what are you doing to help us out? You're sitting on all this money, and you're, and you're giving us no solutions at all.
Well, you just heard some of the things that we were doing from.
With the judgment.
Council Miyake and, and the mayor.
How is that going to prevent, Mr. Chairman, water from coming in our homes? It, it came all the way up the sidewalk. You've seen the pictures. We only got 1.1 inches of rain. It was already up to the sidewalks.
But it didn't go in your basements, correct?
Well, not yet. And it's not, it's, and again, the point is, we have the money to take care of it. We don't need the federal grant money. That's all slated for the north end. As you could see that tonight. As you could see that tonight, we don't need that, we can take care of our own. That's what we need, Mr. Chairman. We need to take care of it. You need to, you need to vote on it. You need to take care of us. It's our money. It's not this council's money, it's our money.
And you elected us to decide what to do with it.
You're not deciding. You're not deciding. You didn't even table it.
I'm not going to sit here and debate all that. You know what we've been doing. I'm sure Councilwoman Hicks Clayton talks to you on every single day.
But it's not taking, it's not taking care of the issue, Mr. Chairman. It's not taking care of the issue. You know it.
We are working on that, though. I guarantee you that.
We're not.
Mayor?
If I might, because the $6,801,157 is money that was collected through a tax that is, that issue is, about one more year it's over with. One more year. And there's been discussions between the Controller, the Treasurer, and myself, because this money, we understand, could only be spent in accordance with the language that was, that authorized by the public for this particular millage.
Because the CSO base in Heinz?
Yes, and now, interesting enough, because we have previously asked Bon Consul to give us whether or not this money could be spent in any other area, and the answer we got was not real positive, but we're going to be pursuing that particular request. But this, this would have to be legally approved by Bon Consul, because there are individuals who loan money that matches the money that was approved by the public, and so this money is, in fact, listed here as CSO reserve, that is correct, but that is legally reserved. We need to have Bon Consul, who would say it would be permissible to spend it for something other than the CSO basin payments, but we have to have enough money in there to pay the bonds. So, that's, but I didn't know we would get this today, but we have actually started asking questions about this weeks ago, and I just want to say that the first conjunction was by, what I received from the attorneys was, no, this is restricted to CSO basin dollars only because of the way the millage, I think it was 30 years ago, that was passed by the, by all the people in Dearborn Heights. So, I just thought I would point that out.
All right, Gary?
Yeah, and if I may, in terms of the notion of, with respect to preventing unnatural and unpermitted flow into the north branch of the Ecorse Creek, after the meeting where Mr. Brown had raised this issue, I discussed the matter with Mr. Brooks, and essentially, if I'm paraphrasing you correctly, and my sense was that there wasn't a factual basis to even make the argument in terms of some of what was being referred to as the flow with regards as contaminated flow. Did I get that correctly? Yeah, and I think there's been a kind of linkage of two very different issues with respect to this that doesn't necessarily bear out, and as I stated before, what was presented, if this council was to approve what Mr. Brown had ended up wanting us to do, I, I and the city would probably be sanctioned for doing something that would be frivolous.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Chairman, I have the facts to back it up, and if you want me to break these up and give me 10 extra minutes, I will overwhelm you with information and proof. Mr. Brooks sits out there, and he knows that there's people, that they dump sewage into the creek. That's facts? Look at MDEQ. I can, I'll give you the webpage. I can fill your mailbox up with information. So I don't know where this is coming from, to debate me. The fact is, we got a problem, we got the money to fix it, at least do some interim things to mitigate it until the county fixes the problem. I don't understand why I have to ask this.
You just heard from the mayor and corporate council that these monies may not even be used.
Okay.
But you have used up your time, you're not asked for this, and so thinking, okay. Is there anyone else that wants to bring anything forward?
Mr. Mayor, my name is Irene, Irene Drabarek. I live on 6950 Cronin Drive in Dearborn Heights. Last meeting, I approached you guys, and I asked about the fence. For two weeks, nobody have courtesy to call me and found out what's going on. I saw the builder director was passing my street slowly. He don't have courtesy, stop the car, get out from the car, and look on the fence. I know it's against the ordinance. The ordinance say permit, neighbor approve, survey. Here, he put the permit, but if I went in last year in October, the builder department showed me a sketch. The sketch was an existing gate and fence, the chain fence, not the fence who's going all the way in my side of my house. I show you the pictures. I can't go with the lawnmower, I can't do nothing. I have a nice grass, now I have everything destroyed. Now, I can show you even for years, everybody in Dearborn Heights maintain the property from the driveway to the driveway. For seven years, my lovely neighbor, he, you can pass it out, please. In the beginning of this year, I put the dirt, I put the grass seeds, it's all the time, the time. Second, I approach you about the cars. I understand the street, it's a city street, but I pay taxes. Why this person have five, six houses, he put the cars? This white SUV, it's for two weeks on the street, never move. Two weeks ago, I told you, it's a dealership. The residents, I understand, park in the street front of somebody's house for few hours, not days and days. My daughter is coming with the grandkids, she can't have spot to park closer to my house.
Irene, one second, I think Mohammed has some answers. Mohammed?
Yes, I can answer on the fence issue, not the parking issue. As a matter of fact, I was planning to talk to the city council concerning the two issues that were brought up during the last session. One of them was on Vernon, the 5723, the garage, the garage roof issue, and then this lady's issue on Cronin. To brief, the one, I visited both, as she said she saw me, yes, I was there the second day. I went to Vernon first of all, and then I was able to speak to the resident because I had to request permission to go to the backyard. Before that, I did my homework, and I noticed that Vernon one, the CFO, are up for inspections right now, April 2015. So I went and spoke to the lady, I said, I send a letter to the gentleman that he has to have a brand-new inspection here, and if he does not comply, then court action will take place, and we will come, you know, I can't tell when this was developed, but right now it is there, which I witnessed. And she was pretty, pretty satisfied with it. I went to Cronin. Initially, on this situation, the next-door neighbor to the lady here, okay, had installed the fence all the way to the sidewalk. Ordinance caught up with them. They violated him for a stop work order, they said, come and get a permit. He did. We issued the permit. When we went to do the inspection, we said, this is not acceptable, you cannot go to the sidewalk, you have to stay the six feet all the way from the back of the house to the rear. Now, on the, he said, what about in between the houses? I said, our ordinance calls for four feet, you cannot exceed four feet. I went out there, yes, I saw, he did comply with it, we finalized it, he had the six-foot vinyl all the way from the rear to the rear of the house, and then from the rear of the house, which is considered to be a side yard, to the front of the house, and it was four feet. Now, between the houses, the fence, yes, all of these photos that I was given, they are all correct. The fence, the privacy fence, and the property line, that's four feet, that's the side back, side setback that was allowed, and this is what's in there. A lawnmower can go in there, anybody can go in with four feet, because between a lot of houses right now, there's only four feet, the previous ones. Now, excuse me, let me finish, please, okay. Now, I came back, I reread the ordinance, and somehow, you know, I was convinced this is correct. To go beyond that, I did make a phone call to Attorney Mark Roberts, who is a person who's, you know, very well aware of the ordinances, and I didn't tell him what my, my opinion. I said, here's the situation, how do you interpret this? And he said, yes, a four-foot is allowed in the side setback, on the side yard. The side yard is, in definition, it's from the front of the house to the rear of the house. From the rear to the end, it could be six feet. The four-foot fence is allowed in every case except it has to be three feet away from adjoining driveway. In this case, there is no driveway. It's the house which is four feet away. So we came both to a conclusion, and then I told him, I said, well, this is my opinion also, he said, we're in agreement. So, as far as the building department with consultation, okay, there is no violations to the fence.
It is. He can even open the door from his car, not hitting the fence.
That's his, that's his problem, man.
You have a picture, how I supposed to go with the lawnmower over there?
It's a four feet, it's right there, it's a four foot.
I have a landscaping putting, there 17 years ago.
Ma'am, this is what the ordinance.
So why in my tablets, it's the ordinance about the fence? It's black and white.
If, 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 I drove around the city after this situation, and
No one, no one, everybody have.
Excuse me, ma'am, the majority of the houses out there, they do have, as a matter of fact, right down here on Fenton, anybody can just drive on this block, the majority of the houses, they have four-foot chain-linked fences from the rear to the front of the house, which is on a side setback, which is allowed by the ordinance.
Wasn't there something we changed a few years ago?
That's the latest one.
That you have to be, if the property line is right at, like, the driveways, you'd be two extra feet?
No, no, the three foot is, okay, like I said, the three foot is, the four feet is allowed unless there is, the neighbor's driveway is abutting to it, you have to stay three feet away to give him a chance to open up the doors. In this case, there is no driveway, it's the side of the house of the lady here, and the fence is right next to his, according to the drawings that he provided us, okay, he is within his property, because the driveway usually ends at about one foot from the property line, and the way I saw it, and he presented it, it's within that range right there. If there's an issue, a survey issue, that would be taken somewhere else.
So that's his driveway?
That is his driveway, yes.
Okay, yep, okay.
And that's why, you know, she's saying he can't even open the door, which I think that's his problem.
That's his problem, exactly.
But who's gonna, who's gonna fix this side of my house?
You're not going to be able to solve this, we have not been able to solve it as Her neighbor has actually been banned, the gentleman from City Hall. You've got a real difficult issue here. I mean, when we get into severe neighborhood disputes of this regard, sometimes we are able to offer mediation and other things. I'm telling you that the fence, a lot of the stuff is symptomatic of a bigger issue, and until that issue is addressed, these are symptoms of it. And I think we would be more than happy to provide, I'm not sure if it'll be successful, because like I said, her neighbor had, we had to ban him from City Hall because of the way he conducted himself. Didn't want to get that particular, but we could debate this all night, and you're not going to be able to solve it. You've got to get both parties in a room and resolve it through some kind of mediation with a professional person, because this cannot get solved, and next week, I mean, it could be the fence this week, and next week it could be this, he's going to come back with something. This, I'm not saying she's at fault at all, but the escalation of this has gotten beyond our capabilities of solving it.
Mr. Mayor, I understand what you're saying, but this is my property. Why he destroy my property? If he put the fence, why he damage the side of the, I have a nice grass, now I have holes, I have a mess. He cut the landscaping, he damaged the round concrete. Why have to have expense?
Would this be a legal matter, Gary?
This would be a legal matter where someone should get a survey, if she's talking about what's on her property or not on her property. As the building director pointed out, if there's a survey issue, then it should certainly end up being addressed, and then perhaps at that time, the city would end up getting involved, but based on what the building director stated, it appears to me that, and with Mark Roberts having done that, and it sounds, I mean, I've worked on these sign, or the, you know, it's like the sign ordinance and the fence ordinance, some of these ordinances we've just done and done and done so many times over the years, I don't necessarily remember all of the details without taking a good close look, but that is my recollection is consistent with what Mr. Soba has indicated, and if Mr. Roberts conferred in that, then it would appear that that would be correct, unless there is an issue with respect to someone being on someone else's property, in which case someone needs to end up getting a survey, and then perhaps the issue can end up being revisited if someone had put a fence on to someone else's property.
Okay, thanks. Ray?
Ray Muscat, Havelock Street. I was out at her house this week, and this guy's got five cars, plus two cars in his driveway. What does someone need seven cars for with two drivers? That only leads me to believe that there's business being done with selling and buying of vehicles, okay? That's number one. Number two, if you look at the pictures real carefully, his six-foot privacy fence extends beyond the back of his house. So already, his six-foot, yes it is, I got pictures right here in my wallet to show you, all right? I took the pictures myself. His six-foot fence comes beyond the back of his house. Now, that four-foot fence, be it legal as it may be, doesn't serve any purpose other than to aggravate his neighbor, okay? No purpose whatsoever. There's no way she can get a lawnmower between her house unless she's climbing through rocks and landscaping and stuff of that nature. I understand it's a legal issue as far as the fence is legal, he is correct, the four-foot fence is legal. But, you know, somewhere along the line, as council people, we've got to look at that ordinance and start using some common sense and saying, hey, you know, we've, we've got to be neighborly and help one another, instead of, you know, saying, okay, now that's legal, we've got to change that ordinance. And I'd like to know when he pulled his permits, was it before or after, with all the concrete that was poured in the back of that yard, okay? Now, nobody knows that, all right? There's also a hot tub back at the back of his garage, and there's electric lines, and I know they got to be closer than 10 feet to that, you know, he's supposed to be 10 feet away. I'm willing to bet those overhead lines are a lot closer than 10 feet. So there's a lot of things going on there that somebody is not being honest about, and that, I got the pictures, if you want to see the pictures.
It's right here, sir. It's right here.
Yes, he is right, but let's, it is extend beyond, no, no, it's right here, right here. You don't have to show it to me, it's right here.
Well, I'm going to show you anyway. It's right here.
Why are we talking about this? Here's this six-foot fence right there, goes beyond his house.
I understand that, I understand that. Could I, could I explain something?
I don't want to hear anymore. I don't want to hear the rest of them, but I'm done. You know what, you know what, Ray?
Let's have some respect.
You cannot, or, you cannot, I've been working with this lady for, eight years ago this started, right? Eight years ago. You think I don't know? You think I don't know what's going on?
Just tell me you don't want to hear it.
I don't, because we can't fix it.
Let me just pass this.
I've seen it.
Okay, no, take a look at the side, the side door.
Yes.
Take a look at the side door.
I've seen it.
The side door.
Mohammed, because I got the finished pictures.
Okay. The side door.
Yeah.
See it? Okay, now let me explain the ordinance again, the side door. Look at the side door.
Right here, I'm, I'm, I mean, the side.
I mean, the side door.
Yeah, we don't need you to re-explain.
No, no, but I have to just clarify one thing. The ordinance does allow the six-foot fence to extend from the rear property all the way to the first opening that goes to the house. As a matter of fact, three feet in front of that. In this case, there is a side door, which there's access to the house, and that's why the privacy. A privacy fence can extend three feet in front of this side door to give a chance for the door to open up. So they are in compliance, yes.
Mr. Chairman?
That's all I needed to know.
Yes, sir.
And that's correct.
Okay.
Then you are correct.
Thank you. I just, you know, I had an email, and I did follow up on that. And I know, Jack, not to put you on the spot, I know you're sending someone out to take a look at the hot tub, correct? We talked about that today. And as far as the unmoved vehicles in the street, if you have over 48 hours, that's a traffic ordinance violation. That can be reported.
The police never come.
No. Also, Hicks Clayton, go ahead.
I'm sorry, no, no, that's all I wanted to say, is that there was some follow-up, and I just wanted to share that. That's what we discussed, so, and that's at least, because I know the hot tub was brought up. Somebody will be out tomorrow to look at that. So I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but I just wanted to follow up on that.
Anyone else have anything?
Thank you.
Sir?
Okay, my name is Ron Frenzy. Live over in, on Fairwood, which is one block east of Inster and two and a half blocks north of Ford Road. And I have two unpleasant topics tonight. One is, has to do with rats, unfortunately, and one has to do with potholes. Okay, the problem with the rats, I find, is that yesterday was garbage day on, on Fairwood. And two-thirds of the people collect all their garbage in their house in plastic bags, which is fine, but then put them on the curb in plastic bags. Now, what's the problem? One month ago, after, just as the winter broke, winter broke and the guy, warm weather, I took my car and had an oil change. Guy popped the hood open, looked in the hood, and he says, come on here, I gotta show you something. So, so I, so I got out of the car, looked, looked in there. On top of the battery were seven pieces of pizza crust. Now, how'd they get there? Well, the neighbor likes to eat pizza, but they don't like to eat the crust. So they, so they put the trash in the bags, put the bags behind the house. The rats go in these bags, eat the pizza, but they're smart because it was cold. So they go underneath my car, go up, sit on top of the battery. They have a nice warm place to eat because the engine is still warm. So, so how do you solve that? Down in Wyandotte, they have an ordinance that if you have trash bags, they, and if you put the trash bag out to be picked up just by a bag, they'll put a sticker on there and, and they won't pick it up. They just refuse. So you have to have, if you put your, if you put your garbage in a trash bag, it must be in, say, those 30 or 40-gallon thick pieces of trash can.
Garbage can.
Garbage bags, garbage cans, or aluminum. So I think that would be really something to consider.
Well, Ron, what we're doing is, we're gonna, and I think the council's in agreement with this, we're gonna go to the bins like they have in Dearborn and Livonia and Garden City. So the contract will be coming up in a short period of time with the garbage, and we will not pick up those bags because there're gonna be one-armed trucks. So you're gonna get a, a garbage container with a lid. You will put it in there, and that's what you wheel to the front of, by the street. So that, we think, is a better way to deal with this. And so, it's up to the council if they want to do something between now and then, but that's coming. So we're, we're in complete agreement with you. No one recognizes that more. I love to walk, that's my form of exercise. There's, you, I think a lot of the verments in the area know when it's garbage day because I'm telling you, I have to be extra careful not to run into skunks, raccoons, an ugly creature, that, that's it. Possums, which I think are the most ugliest thing around. So we're gonna address that.
Now, Wyandotte, they have the option. You can get that, that big, I think it's like 70-gallon drum that, that they put into the dumpster with the one arm, or you can have, my mother lives in Wyandotte, so, so they have the other option of you have the smaller can if you don't have much garbage. They have both options.
We're, we're gonna have a standard one because the, all the stuff, well, we're gonna, we're going out for bids, and in the bid package, it's gonna request that, the containers.
See, great minds think alike, isn't that, isn't that true? It is true.
People aren't supposed to put their trash out and leave it out for, you know,
Days.
More than, for days. You're, you're right.
Then just another, another topic on, on, on Fairwood. Probably, maybe about 15 years ago, the city came and they asphalted Fairwood, which was fine. But now, after, after the past three or four years, some potholes have developed, and the city repaired them, which was fine. But now the pothole's really huge. Some of the potholes are three foot by six foot, some are four foot by eight foot. And I took four pictures of what it looks like.
Give them to Mr. Zimmer.
Okay. So, so
So, like, I, I brought as a, as a visual aid, little asphalt. So if you take like three little asphalts, one, two, three, you know, they don't really weigh very much. But in the past month, I actually filled up this trash can four times, two-thirds, two-thirds full. It weighed 200 pounds. So, and that was just from the curb out three feet. So it has to just be totally redone.
Bill's right in the back, so after the meeting, just chat with him.
Who? I don't know.
Raise your hand, Bill. There we go.
Mr. Zimmer's the guy in the back of the fair.
Yes, he's the man to talk to.
I thought there was like a 15-minute challenge that he was supposed to make.
Anyone else wish to bring anything before us?
Suzanne Todd of Academy Street. First item I'd like to say is about the street cleaning. We people need to know what day the street sweeper will be down our streets. We cannot be expected to keep our cars off the street Monday through Thursday in the hopes our streets will be cleaned. If we could make up a schedule and stick to it, if people park on that street on the day it's supposed to be cleaned, then they get ticketed. But we need to know when the street, a street sweeper is coming down the street so we can keep our cars off of it. The second thing is the flooding. We had one inch of rain in the streets, both in the north and south, and were flooded. Lucky this time, no homes or basements were flooded. However, I really feel the city needs to come up with a definite plan right now to help those areas that were hit so badly last August 11th. The other thing is my feelings on the water fund. I feel the water fund is not a bank where you can borrow to make ends meet, just because the budget doesn't get balanced. With the monies coming from the headly override and the cable companies, the council and mayor should have no trouble balancing a budget without depending on the water fund to bail them out. Number four, it has been over eight months since the flooding of August 11th, 2014. When are the people who submitted claims going to know whether their claim is going to be paid or not?
Well, did you hear what I said at the beginning of this?
I did, but you didn't.
And to contact?
Oh, now they have to contact another lawyer.
No, 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 it's the same attorney that handles it. He's handled all of ours.
Okay, so they contacted?
Yeah, Greg Roberts, and that's
And he's gonna tell them whether their claim has been?
That's why I gave you the email address and everything.
Okay, I just, oh, I wanted to clarify that then.
That's what, what he said to do.
So people have to contact him to find out if their claim has been paid or not. That's correct.
Yeah, you contact him for the flood.
Could you give that email again, please?
Mr. Chairman will also be putting
I have to read it.
Mr. Chairman, we'll also be putting that on the TV screen.
You'll have that, and then you'll put it on the cable, okay?
Correct.
He'll put it on the cable like you know how you see where
Okay, and I can send it out to the people who've been asking me to. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wish to bring anything before us? Seeing none?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilman Horvath, second by Councilman Kaczynski. All in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Close? Motion adjourned, thank you.